Okay. Like to call and reading the order? Please stand for a fudge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Thank visitors for coming. First thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes from August 13th, 2025, and August 18th, 2025, special meetings. You have a motion to approve one at a time or both?
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Maybe we should do them separately. Could I move to approve them separately since I have to abstain from the 18th? A few other people might have to as well.
As long as you've read the minutes, you don't have to be there.
Gotcha. Yes, I read the minutes.
Okay, you can vote on it.
Sorry, I'm new here apparently.
Motion for both.
Let's see if there's a second. There is a second. Any discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion to accept August 13th and August 18th meetings signify the saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion for the amendment. Thank you. Any additions to the agenda?
Yes, can I add to approve the CSD child nutrition program?
The Connecticut State Department of Education Child Nutrition Program. Okay, there's a motion to add the agenda to have a second.
A second.
Okay, a second. Any discussion on it? We need two-thirds vote to put it on. We'll discuss it when we make the motion later. We'll discuss further. All those in favor of adding it, I'll add it to a 4D. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion for curation, so 4D is approved. Connecticut State Department of Education Child Nutrition Program. And Mary will talk to us about that. Okay. Any other additions to the agenda?
I just want to shout out. I wanted to make a shout out to Seymour School. They did their NGSS testing, which is science-based testing.
Taking away from my chairperson's.
Oh, is that? Why and looking? There's nothing there.
You're out of order.
I'm out of order. Strike that.
You can wait till item six to be made.
Under her three E, we missed that one, yeah.
We missed it, but we talked. That's why. Yeah, we talked to us. Sorry, Drew. I'm glad you. We certainly wouldn't want it to be overlooked. So I'm glad you brought it up. I'm glad you're here as well. Comments from visitors regarding the agenda items. Now she could tell us all about it.
That's actually not why I'm here, but go Seymour. I'm here on the cell phone policy. It's not new information that I have opinions on cell phone policies. But just here to state again, there are so many states that now have adopted a bell-to-bell policy. And it has come from the governor, so I understand, not Connecticut governor, but other states. So I understand that it's kind of apples and oranges at this point. But just the research is undeniable that having the bell-to-bell phones away for K through 12 is just the best way to go for the learning of our students. And I haven't specifically spoken to any teachers one-on-one, so I cannot speak on their behalf. But I do think that it would be beneficial for them to not have to police cell phones. And I appreciate the lock boxes and the steps that we're moving in that direction. However, I do think that we can still do more and not put it on the backs of the teachers to have to follow through on the consequences and the discipline when it's just set in stone. This is what the expectation is. So. That's all.
Thank you. Other comments? No other comments. Okay, chairpersons report. First thing I'd like to do is thank all the staff and students for smooth opening days of school. I'd like to thank Drew Namnoon for requesting, talked about a walkthrough through the schools. And that's something we'll plan through this year to hit each school. But it may be worthwhile next year to do that just before opening so we can see the buildings and what kind of condition they're in before they start, so we know the status. So that's something we'll be talking about further. Want to congratulate again East Grammy High School for being recognized again by U.S. News and World Report as one of the nation's best high schools. And I'd like to also recognize that Seymour School, like to share that 86.7% of the fifth graders met or exceeded expectations on the next generation science standards this year. It's an incredible accomplishment for our students and staff. It was the highest score for fifth grade in the state of Connecticut. Certainly a round of applause. Our current sixth graders. And this achievement reflects what they've learned cumulatively from kindergarten up to grade five, and now they're going to middle school. And I think, do you want to add something to that?
Nothing. I'm very, very pleased to be part of this. It's a huge celebration and a wonderful honor. We are so excited that this has happened that we're starting to think about planning a little celebration about that. So we'd be excited to do that. Thank you so much.
Can I just add something too? That these current sixth graders that we're talking about, these were the COVID kindergartners. And it shows that none of that got in the way. They were able to keep on going. I mean, they missed half a kindergarten and they were hybrid beginning of first grade. And that's just like awesome news to hear. And kudos to the teachers K through five. It's incredible.
Yeah, give the comment to them.
I bet.
We recognize what they do down there in Algrove and Seymour all the time. Exciting news to hear. Okay, now we move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, so thank you, Bob. We are moving on to the superintendent's report. And we have agenda item 3A, policy 5034, the cell phone policy, or the, I believe it is actually called the use of private technology devices by students. It's here for a second read. And as you recall, this policy was introduced at our last meeting typically the second read is an opportunity for final discussion and clarification before the board takes action. So I guess we pause here and invite any questions in terms of discussion from the board.
I had a couple items when I was rereading that really came out to me. And I'm on the policy committee, so I'm just as guilty as this. But with this policy in particular, there was a lot of discussion. So in hindsight, reading what we actually wrote, there's some gaps. I have two concerns. First, the consistency across the handbooks and the policy and all that, it's inconsistent. And this policy isn't, policies are supposed to be easy to read. It's not artwork. We shouldn't all look at it and take something different away from it. The first paragraph in of itself is backwards. It does not, it says that privately owned devices will not be permitted in grades K through eight. The sentence before it says the students may possess privately owned technological devices. It's conflicting information. I would like to see it, that last line privately owned technological devices not be permitted. And then the next line add in high school or ninth through 12th grade students may possess privately owned. Now it's saying which groups we're talking about. So I think clarifying it. Regardless of how we go with the policy, we said we want everyone to have a phone on their desk all day long. It needs to be clear. So that was my first concern is just really black and white. What are the target audiences? And keeping that consistent throughout the policy, just saying at the high school level or ninth through 12th. We had also talked about where exceptions would be made. There's verbiage in here and in the handbooks. It's going everywhere from the teacher to the administrator, administration making exceptions. We had talked in the policy meeting about it. You need an IEP or a FIBOS 504 plan to get those exceptions. And it's not in here.
Which even that should be very cautious, like medical reasons.
Medical reasons, yes. I just, we should not be able to all take different things away from these policies, which opens the doors for people to push. And I think at the end of the day, regardless of which way we go with this, I don't want to put the burden on the administration. The teachers are paid to teach. When we're sitting there waiting for power school grades to come through or our students are waiting to see how they did on a test, I just don't, in my opinion, I don't want to see that delayed because the teachers tied up calling a parent on a second or third offense about holding cell phones. I'd rather them focus on giving the students who need extra attention that attention, doing the work that is their main focus. And again, the student handbooks, and granted, the handbooks were written over the summer and this policy is not confirmed, so they are a little wishy-washy. But Algrove and Seymour both say that they're not allowed, but you can get permission from the principal and it may be approved. Middle school has the old verbiage. You can't have it, but the teacher can say you can have it if it's approved by them. And also the administrator or an IEP. The high school, it's not allowed unless you're instructed by the teacher. Then there's the tech and internet user agreement that all of us parents and students sign that says, it just flat out implies that technology is allowed. So we need consistency. We need a common story, whichever way we go.
And to add to that, I see in here where it says except specifically permitted by instructional staff. And I think what you're saying is what does that even mean? Because I thought one of the reasons we were even looking at the verbiage of this was because staff didn't want that in there any longer. They didn't want to have to determine, like, you know, if a kid's like, oh, but the policy says you can let me. Like, I thought they wanted it to be completely not up to them. There was no reason, they have school-issued Chromebooks, anything they could need to need to do, they could do in a Chromebook. If there was an emergency, of course, they could go use a phone in the office. But this still makes it sound like a teacher can say, hey, you guys have all been great today, you can use your phones the last 10 minutes of class. That's how I take that, that sentence. Now, if I'm wrong and the staff doesn't want that, but I was under the impression from just meetings and things, I thought that was presented to us. And when we discussed that policy was the teachers kind of wanted it off their hands, which I'm sure they do.
And I will say, the unsolicited feedback, I was just reeling with an earshot at the high school freshman orientation, a few of the teachers made note that it's been kind of a relief. It's nice. The students are fine with it. They're putting their phones away. They have these nice little boxes or just in their backpack and they're able to focus. One teacher commented that they had extra time at the end of their period. So instead of picking up phones and stuff, they actually worked on more, more, I don't want to say what class or anything it was, but the content of that class and talking amongst each other about the content of that class, which was extremely refreshing. And that's the feedback I'm hearing.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry. So to summarize, Drew, you would say that it should be not permitted in grades K, 12. Is that what you're saying?
The group all really pushed for K through eight is bell-to-bell. And that nine through 12 was based on the student handbook. And that was, and the handbook is not in class and not in study hall, but they are permitted in between bells and during lunch. That's what the group had correct me.
Is this something that maybe we need to bring back to policy?
With administrators.
I think that I'd also, Suzanne, I'd like to some feedback from the teachers because they're the ones that have to deal with it. Because I thought last year, they felt that our policy wasn't very strong.
Right.
And I don't see this policy being stronger. You know, I agree with everything you're saying. Paragraph one, the one comment I had was privately owned technological devices will not be permitted in grades K through eight. I would like to see the word used instead of permitted, that they're not to be used because I still think there's a large contingent of parents that use cell phones for communications for the kids, that I get on the bus safely, whatever it may be. And I also come to that conclusion, because when I look at K through eight and I look at our policy and I look at disciplinary actions, you know, I think we all want this to be teaching responsibility for learning habits. I mean, a cell phone is a distraction. But in disciplinary action, it looks like here, if I'm an eighth grader and I pull out a cell phone, the only thing you could do to me is suspend me or expulsion. And I think in eighth grade, we should be training them responsibility, teaching them not leaving the only disciplinary action is to get suspended or expelled. Because right here, you can't say loss of privilege. We don't give them a privilege of it. A prohibition of use, we're saying we don't let them use it and we're not going to. Or possession. So if they've got it in their bookbag and it doesn't ring and it falls out, then according to our policy, they get suspended or expelled. And I think eighth graders are smarter than that. And I really think elementary kids are more responsible of what teachers say about cell phone use or about what to do here or there than many times older kids would do. So I think it's a learning thing. I don't think it goes from K through eight where you're not responsible at all. And then also the ninth grade, you could use it in the lunchroom, you could use it between classes and under teacher discretion. And I guess I'd like to hear some teacher feedback and maybe even some parental feedback because I don't want to hear it later about the complaints. I don't think the phone should be used in school. I agree with that 100%. They shouldn't be out, there shouldn't be a discretion and they're a distraction of learning.
And that's K 12, Bob.
And that's K 12. But having them in possession, we're really penalizing a large group of kids. We're not teaching them anything and saying, well, you're ninth grade, you're an adult now, you can do what you want. And I'm not sure if that's what we want to teach. So I'm for, they should be able to have it and not use them in schools. And I think we can nip it in the bud there. I'm glad to hear that the kids are responding more favorably, but the policy hasn't changed. We're still operating by an old policy. I think kids are being more responsible and I think that's a good thing. But I don't think it begins on the first day of ninth grade. I think there are many kids younger than that who are responsible and in need. I just think today, people expect that. Everyone's got their cell phones with them all the time. And I would hate to see our school system have something happen, something happen because a kid couldn't communicate. I hate to take that away. But in school, you know what? They shouldn't be out at all. And a teacher shouldn't say, well, there's 10 minutes left. You know, I liked Drew's comment that they did some more schoolwork. I mean, that's what we're expecting. We're here because every decision we make, how does it affect student achievement? That's what CAE tells us, ask every decision we make, how does this affect student achievement? If it doesn't improve it, then we shouldn't be approving it.
I will say two final points on my behalf at least. I mentioned it last time, the younger students, it's more about the parents reaching out to the children and making plans. These students are in our, we're responsible for these students during the day. And there's been multiple cases where the parents are making plans. Okay, go get on this person's bus. Or families that are split up, you're going to grandma's house today and the office is not aware of it. And we need to account for every student and their whereabouts as they're getting on buses.
Absolutely. And if a parent did that and the teachers or administration don't know about it, I wouldn't allow, wouldn't allow the kid to do it. Parents have to be responsible too.
Yeah, it just throws, it slows everything down. And I don't think any of us want to be talking about buses here.
No, I agree, Drew, but we know kids are going to have cell phones in their bookbags. And I don't want to see an eighth grader getting expelled from school because they have a cell phone in their bookbag.
Right.
And that's what our policy says. And that's why I think the policy. We need to look at it again.
Policy, the majority of this, 90-some percent of it is Shipman and Goodman. And it's to cover our butts. It's the legalese, the cyberbullying, the hacking, accessing illegal things. And then when we discussed this originally, the handbook is supposed to cover the local level. Administration can set that how they feel is this is more of the legal and they write it in a legalese manner. When you say about the disciplinary, since it's written by lawyers, it starts with may result in a loss. They put that word may in there because it doesn't have to go to that level. It's just, it could. It doesn't mean that is your first level of discipline. It just may result. That's how they write all these things.
But I think what we could change, this says may result in loss of access privileges. Well, there's not supposed to be access. The first one is.
And then it lists the whole thing, what it could, because it's at a state level and cites all your.
No, you're right.
And then the handbook is supposed to address more localized.
But the problem is the handbooks are all different and they don't follow this.
That's, I think, the problem.
That's the problem. We haven't updated the handbook yet.
Right.
Because this is supposed to take care of all the big level legal stuff, if anything would happen as far as.
And to Drew's point, all the handbooks need to be consistent.
The handbooks, I think, are what you need to focus on. Because that can be more readily adapted. If something's not working, administration, the Board of Ed controls the policy, whereas the local level, what goes day to day, needs to be in the handbook.
Those are your standards.
And that can be changed much easier without hundreds of reads.
But we do just need to make sure that what we have in the policy makes sense with what's in the handbooks. And we didn't have access to the handbooks when we were trying to look through.
We need to do them together at the same time.
Right.
So do we want to bring this back to policy?
Well, yeah. Ricky, you bring up a good point about Shipman and Goodman. I actually was going to ask about, I wanted to see what they were proposing. And paragraph one, how's your proposal different than this? I thought Shipman and Goodman would be tougher because I thought the state wanted tougher standards.
You said, do you have the side-by-side?
They didn't want to make, they wanted to leave it to us to be the bad guys. They don't want to just make one blanket policy that would work for all of us. They just want the local levels to be the better guys.
I don't have, if I had my laptop, I'd have the side-by-side, but we didn't change.
Want us to look at it there?
We didn't change it terribly. It wasn't much. The first paragraph is the one that you customized for yourself. Yeah. But the rest of it is mostly Shipman and Goodman, state statutes.
Well, I think it's a good idea to send it back to policy. I mean, you brings up a good point. We don't want the teachers to be spending their time being police people on this thing either. But I do believe in teaching responsibility. Kids have to have some responsibility, just like we all do. We learn when we go certain places, we don't use our cell phones and we can't. And we probably sometimes use them when we're not supposed to as adults as well. That's why I think kids need a good model. They need to learn how to use them because I don't think they know how to use them. I'd actually was thinking that maybe I would like to see the board or the school support some sort of study within our own system. You know, we've got these programs kids do. I'd love to see an experiment where some kids volunteered to put the phones away for the whole school day and tell us how they feel about it on day one. And then four months later, tell us how they feel about it. Because when I look and read what's going on around the country, kids feel relieved after that pressure's been taken off them. And we need to help them.
Sounds like a good capstone project or something.
Yeah, so I would say at least.
Sounds like a good capstone project.
I'd say it could be a capstone project. It would have been my capstone project. I was thinking of, I said, a great real-life project with real results that I think has an impact. Because right now, everyone thinks the cell phone, they can't be a second without it. But I would like to see Shipman and Goodman, what they say.
Bob, I have that answer for you.
Watch it.
That answer is the Shipman and Goodman, or Goodman, Goodman. It's verbatim what you see. The only addition to that entire paragraph is that sentence that begins with privately owned technological devices.
And we added that in.
So we added that in. Everything before it is right off the template. And I think that's why it's not blending. So, and like I said, even if you hadn't moved the sentences around and you just said high school students may possess, and then that privately owned is addressing K through eight. And now it's clear, high school, K through eight.
Right, I agree with that. What did Shipman say about cell phones being allowed by instructional staff?
This is from theirs.
They say.
What paragraph was that?
Use of privately owned technological devices.
Their policy is going to allow anything that's not state mandated.
Okay, and the state's not mandating anything.
It's going to give you gray area to make your adjustments in your handbook.
That's correct.
That's what it's doing.
And that is generally, we took it as is.
Well, can we get?
Yep.
A review from, I don't know, the teachers' union maybe? Or would that be the best way to get it so we can get their views on what they think?
Well, as far as I am aware.
Because I want the committee to go back, but I think you'd want some information of what people feel.
Absolutely. And I know that there was a survey that was done last year, so it might be, we should look at that and then we can see what maybe wasn't asked that we could, so we're not over-surveying our teachers and staff. However, there might have been very specific questions, so we might want to just send out another survey after we look at it. I also think, I was thinking about what you were talking about, Bob, and it's very important that we look at these policies as also a framework for us. So some of those gray areas, we actually can tighten up if we so choose as a district because that's what another reason, much like curriculum, when it's given to us, it's not just, we're not supposed to unpack it and just use it. We're supposed to unpack it and look at our individual kiddos and our schools and our communities. And I really want us to think about in the policy, to think about in relooking at this, about what kind of skills we want our students to have around their usage. We all know that when we make something a do not touch, what do kiddos want to do? Right? And we all know that if we, if maybe they're not having them all day, there might be a problem of overuse at some other time. So it's not that this isn't, this is totally important and worthwhile, but as we start to move in a more innovative space, and these were created, you know, they're not created all the time. So this particular template probably wasn't where we are right now in understanding how kids are actually turning a little bit off of the use, little by little, because they're seeing that it's work. Their moms work on it, their dads and their grams, we all work on it. So there's some kind of sociological shift that's happening that I'm so excited that the board has recognized. That being said, I think there's a lot of things that we could do here and in the handbook to speak to, the modeling, the how to use in the high school, as you were talking about. How are we using it so that when they go to college, they completely understand themselves and their relationships with their devices? So I'm glad if the proposal is to bring it back to policy.
Okay, and that's what we're going to do with it. Any other comments? Okay, seeing that, you want to go capital plan?
All right, so now we have agenda item 3B, the capital plan. So the subcommittee met to review the proposed updates and the group agreed to the changes that are reflected in the document. And what I'm going to do is walk us through, and I have a bulleted list here. So if you're following along, what you can do is as I, it's going to be in order. So the first chunk will be technology and then district, multi-school. So if you want to follow along line by line, does that work? Awesome. Okay, so starting with, first of all, we deleted the 2425 column. So that's this one. Starting off in technology, we added $6,000 for the Dell server for Algrove for 2627. We deleted security camera server and software row because it was zero. We moved 28,000 from Arrow Hive Wi-Fi maintenance and repairs from 2627 and added it to the 10,000 in 2526 for a total of 38,000. We added 11,844 replacement of MS Adobe iPads with cases for 2829. We increased, we increased 10,900 to 11,844 for the scaled replacement of iPads K1 and cases for 27, 28, and 2829, and added 11,844 for 2930. We added 20,000 for a network switch for Seymour for the 2627 year. All right, moving, is everybody good with technology? Can we move on to?
I had one question on technology.
Absolutely.
Does that include, I know they sometimes get grants and special funding for those purchases. Does that, is that just the price and then there could be grants and things applied to bring it down?
Yes. Yes.
I'm the IT guy, I got to ask these questions.
That's very important. I asked it earlier today and got the answer, which was yes. Okay.
Do you ever get an answer to how big that switches?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. So I actually brought with me, so we can, I'll make sure that you're able to see it. It really does take, it's every, it's every single network connection for the entire school. So what I had here was, was actually, we have a quote for it as well. So I'll let everybody see it. And it's actually right around $20,000. So I will show this to you. So we have a whole bunch of, because I was with you too, I wanted to make sure. So far, I feel pretty good about it, but we'll keep looking at it as well.
Yeah, I was just curious as to how many ports you had.
Okay, so it looks like here, I don't, actually, there's one for, I'm going to get back to you, I'm going to have Lisa send, I can get, because Bill wrote a really detailed email that I did not print out with me, but it will, we can even, so it has all of that.
It would be helpful just to get, we kind of know where we're looking at.
Well, that's why we asked the question.
Yeah.
It's just a quote, we'll see.
Just to see, yeah.
She, yeah, we asked the question because to me, it's like.
256, 400.
It's got to be.
Yeah, and I think we have more, we can have more discussion about that as well. I should have printed out Bill's email, but.
We just want to geek out, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked about the grants and stuff. Sometimes you're locked in because you are getting.
Exactly, okay. All right, so moving on to multi-school, we had deleted security camera row, it was, that line was zero. We deleted.
Bill said about 100 ports.
100 ports.
100 ports?
100 ports.
That's it?
About 100 ports, I just got the email from Bill.
Thank you. All right, so we, so we, second item that is changed in multi-school is we deleted $20,000 to refinish the high school gym floors and stage for year 2526. And then we increased 75,000 to 80,000 to refinish the high school gym floors slash stage for 2728. So deleted the one just refinish, and then the other one is the really down to the studs. So. High school, moving on, we've got, we moved $15,000 of new stage curtain from 2627 to 2526. We moved $2,100,000 for roof over 2001 edition from 2627 to 2526. We deleted the knee wall with power library row, it was at a zero. For middle school.
Oh, I had a question about high school.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I don't usually talk this much at these meetings.
This is great.
For the high school, I'd be very interested to see, I think our auditorium needs some work, and we know that, it's in the capital plan. I'd love to see people using our auditorium again as far as rented space, dance studios, local theater companies and all. It'd be interesting to see if we polled them and asked them what they would like to see. What would bring you back to our auditorium or bring you to ours? So as we're upgrading equipment, lighting, if sound, whatever, is there something that will make us, that will put us ahead of everyone else where they say, oh, I want to host my event at East Granby High Auditorium? I'd love to poll before we spend the money, see maybe we're not looking at the right things. I know we need to replace most of the equipment, but at least we can steer it towards making ourselves very marketable to bring some little extra revenue in.
I think they'll be back, we kind of put it on pause because we didn't, we had it, there's a lot of changes that were going on, we needed to get a good policy together. So it was on pause and I believe we went through the policy and we got one, we're going to open it back up for rentals. They pretty much use our lighting, our lighting person.
I know we lost some, some.
Well, I know one of the groups we lost before the pause, it was because of cost, but I remember Missy saying we weren't, we can't make money off of it. So we weren't even making money with the amount we were charging. And I know it was, they had said it was too much for what was offered or what we have.
We're lower than a lot of places.
Okay.
Just we haven't, I believe it was in last policy, so we should be able to go back to renting to the dance studios with a little tweaking of the policy.
Yep.
And the LED upgrade of the lighting will help tremendously because those stage lights are just.
Oh, yeah.
No electricity. Those things have probably been there since day one. Okay.
All righty, so moving on to middle school, we moved $25,000 to build wall multipurpose room for 2425 to 2526. If we look at Seymour, we deleted the gym air conditioning row because it was at zero. We moved 21,000 for flashing school zone sign from 2425 up to 2526. We added $475,000 for HVAC at Seymour for 2728. And that is because we are at the time that that has to be done.
That's new, we just found out about.
Mm-hmm. And so only one, I'll finish with All Grove because then we can open it up for discussion or questions. All Grove, we moved 20,000 from sound system upgrade from 2526 out to 2627. And those are our capital needs changes. Discussion, more questions?
If this is approved tonight, we'll then be presenting it to the Board of Finance at their next meeting. Any comments from the board first?
I thought the tennis courts were in a situation that we were talking about needing them to be replaced.
That's why I let you go first, I was going to talk about that. Absolutely right. We've been, and we've been telling the Board of Finance over the years, we've been repairing them, but that they're going to need to be replaced. Well, now the repair people don't want to repair them or guarantee them the repairs anymore. If you go there and look at the most recent repairs they did, you can see all the cracks that reoccurred, you can see right where they made repairs. So they're at a point where they need to be replaced. When they were built back with the high school, they didn't put a new base down, they just used the old base and the roots of all those big oak trees that were there are still, the roots are still there, maybe some of the oak trees are, but they need a new base, it needs a new facility. Now, the school, we use it eight weeks out of the year, we use it for our tennis and we use it for tennis and PE. The community uses it all the other time. And it's the only tennis court in town, I was surprised, I was at Grand Brook Park yesterday, there's a tennis court down, there's no nets on it. So we're going to bring that to the Board of Finance's attention because we're not in a position now to repair it this year because the company doesn't want to repair it, guarantee it. So it doesn't need a replacement. So that's going to be something we bring up to their attention. We don't want to put on our five-year plan because we've always told them we were repairing them because we had the money there, but we never felt responsible, full responsibility for the cost of the tennis courts. We hadn't paid to put them in first time, the town did for the renovation. So that's, that's a project. And then, most of them know about it, they may have forgotten about it, but we'll remind them again this week. Good question. Anyone else?
Well, I think I asked this before and I think that somebody already looked into why we have, why we have to pay for the flashing school zone signs. I think we've asked that question and.
Yeah, with the state going back and forth with the state. Are we still unclear about that? We still, we talked about.
So this is, so we have that there as a placeholder. Mary, do you want to?
I believe it's still.
Yep.
So it's still unclear. But the state of San Diego, put walkways in the middle of nowhere, but on the fire department and stuff. They want us to pay for flashing signs to protect the kids. Yeah, that's still unclear who's going to pay for that. Probably going to be us, if we know, we know how the state operates.
One of my focuses this year when we get into true budget season, I really want to examine surrounding districts as well as other Connecticut districts and see actually what is on their school budget lines versus their towns. Because we always get held to the standard of comparing budgets per student from district to district to district, but it's not apples to apples. Just basic things like snow removal, many districts, DPW does it, it's on their line items, it's on the school board's line item in East Granby. So I'd really like to, when we present it, be like, listen, this is how these districts, this is their line items, apples to apples, this is our student, the student, per student budget. Because we have so many things that are not in budgets that people are comparing it to, and it makes it look higher.
And won't that also in turn affect the calculations of the excess cost and all those other things?
Yep.
No, that's a good point.
Really want to dive into that for this budget season. Right.
I just have a comment, it's not until 2829, but I just want everybody to put it in their, back of their heads for future when replacing carpets. Is there a time when we can start talking about replacing it with not carpet? If you've worked in a school that doesn't have carpet, it's amazing, it's more sanitary, it's cleaner, it's still quiet. People say it's loud, it is not loud. And I just think, when I was walking through the high school the other night and just looking at some of the carpets, so just to keep it in the back of our heads for future plans, anybody?
Spills must be easier to clean up.
Grow up, it's easier to clean up. Food, drinks, everything.
Okay, any other else?
All righty.
Good.
So now we're moving on to agenda item 3C, facilities update at the middle and high school. And so Eagle Environmental has completed the inspections and system testing, and we are waiting the final written results, which I believe we just found out are coming tomorrow, or the next few days, yeah. So we're happy about that sooner than we had heard originally. In the meantime, all air handling units and rooftop units are operating as expected and filters have recently been changed. Temperature and humidity levels across the building have remained within recommended guidelines. In addition, professional cleaning services have already been through the building and we are currently waiting on quotes. Once the full report and cleaning quotes are in, I will share them with the board and provide any necessary updates. And so that's a statement about, about that. Before we move on to financial, any questions, come pause for that.
So I'm assuming it's still going to be a little bit before they can use the spaces if they need to be cleaned?
As soon as they're cleaned, yeah, they can go in there. And now we're, it's actually a shorter timeline than I had originally thought because we're going to get their written report like this week, within the next few days. I had thought it was going to be out a little further, so, but everybody's ready. So we have everything like, you know, we've got the.
Ready to go?
Ready to go.
Okay, cool.
I guess my only question is, yeah, they said 10 days out, but they're doing air testing before we clean?
They said it was okay for us to go in and clean.
Yeah.
Oh, they said it's okay.
They gave us the okay to go and clean, everything was fine, you could go in.
Everything's fine, yeah. And that's what we were waiting for, so that's when we got the quotes and.
So we expect the air testing to be good then? Do we get that feeling from when they say go ahead?
I was told it was okay to go in and clean.
Okay, good. Well, I would hope you'd clean before they tested the air for people going, right? I would hope they would do it that way.
I believe testing the air too, you can test it now, you can test it five minutes and it's completely different.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
So they may put something in the report about how they're testing the air or if they're even going to test it, because sometimes you can't really test air. They were testing the humidity levels and all that in their report. So we're going to wait for their report and whatever they recommend us to do. But they did give us the okay to go ahead and clean. I'm hoping to get the quotes, I filed up them today, I'm supposed to get both quotes tomorrow, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and start the process.
I would imagine, yeah, the outdoor atmosphere must have an impact on the air quality because we don't have a, we don't sanitize the air coming in, so it's polluted outside.
And they said, they had a lot of the schools had issues this year because of the high humidity during summer. And the area is closed all summer long. We were not the only school that had issues. The dew point was over 75 for this area, which is unheard of.
Yeah, I think it was the highest.
So, and we weren't the only school. But we are working on it and Eagle did give us the okay to go ahead and clean, we're just waiting for our quotes. And once we get them, again, we're hopefully get both of them tomorrow and then we'll make the decision and bring them back.
Yes, I was very happy to hear, to hear that it had progressed faster than we had expected, so. All right, so if there are no other questions or discussion about that, I'm going to move on to our item 3D and I'm going to turn it over to our business manager, Mrs. Honey.
Okay, financial update, I'm going to start with the fiscal year 2425 and then we'll go into 2526. So this was, you received this in last board meeting, but I just want to emphasize because we're still in the process of finalizing our 2425 financials. So keep in mind that we did have state reimbursements with the excess cost, excess cost grant that received a total of $513,000. Normally, we don't get this money, this always went to the town, this year we put in our financials. And then we also got a supplemental grant this year by the state, all the schools did, so that was an initial 113,000. And we put those funds offset against our 330 line, our 561 or 560P line. And then in addition, the town also received 112 of the excess cost because they had it in their original budget. Next year going forward, we're going to get all the excess cost. And the total reimbursement was about 625,000. We also got reimbursements from Hartford as we normally do because there are services that we provide for Hartford students as part of their tuition, we got reimbursed for that. Flipping on to 2526, our auditors are here this week and next week to audit our financials, both the town and ours are, be here for two weeks and then we'll probably get, they probably won't have it finalized till the end of November. We always start our conferences with 2526, so we'll have our July and August financials next week with most our conferences in. We had, the IRS has selected our 2023 employment tax return review and have requested supporting documentation. And we are required to submit, the request is by September 29th. They asked for September 5th and I told them no. So we got September 29th. Our security upgrades, three-way communication has completed the surveillance system upgrades across all schools. And this was a grant that we had, so it's a quarterly grant, so we plan to request reimbursement by the end of September. We expect a reimbursement rate of 43.21% or about 25,000 back to the town. And then our EFS, which is our educational financial system report, and a report that we do, that was, that was submitted to the state August 31st. It will be reviewed by our auditors and it's due to the state, the final one is due by January 31st. I have attached the financials, these are our preliminary before the audit, they don't change much. And you have the notes, there's really nothing changed from the last time, so I don't really want to spend the time going through all the notes unless you have questions. Keep in mind that our non-lapsing is 2% of budget, so we're allowed to take 2% of our excess and put it into non-lapsing. And anything that we return, over the 2%, will be returned to the town. So as of this, again, these are preliminary, I don't really like giving numbers preliminary, but it's an excess of 577, but we have to keep in mind, it was because we got the excess costs. This is not that we didn't under-budget, that we would have been well over budget without the excess cost coming back to us to help us with this. So we should be able to give them back about 175 back to the town, give or take, and we can put about 400 into non-lapsing, which will help with our repairs that made it. So that's again, above board approval, but we're not requesting that to the, to our numbers are filed because they could change. It could change. So that's an update on both years. Any questions or comments?
Just to elaborate too on the not being truly under-budget, the excess cost, also two of the other drivers I see, and I think. The life insurance, it was because we, at the time of budgeting, we didn't have it finalized and we got a better deal than we were expecting, correct?
On which one?
Life insurance or our health insurance. Didn't that happen midway, like partially after we submitted budget?
Yes.
So we got a reduced rate on that, so that was a big chunk. And then the other thing, the, do we have a final number for how much we saved for the LED project?
No.
Okay.
They said it's very hard to determine with our size school and what we use, so I had to find out how much we saved.
Because I saw on the electricity line, it was a decent savings.
It's always a guess we put on the budget.
Yeah, so I was just curious how much of that percentage had to do with the LED project?
They cannot figure that one out.
Because it was a six-figure savings than what we budgeted, so.
Because we budget before we know one, we budget, use like a 10% increase, we probably have a 5% increase, not necessarily from the LED, it was just electricity, where this year electricity was a lot higher. So you kind of budget before everything comes in. Remember, we start the process in October and we finalize numbers in June. So, you know, but all in all, we're, you know, we look at bottom line, so we kind of move in between. We don't really take our budget and move them from bucket to bucket. If we were over here, we would take it somewhere else where we could use it. If you look, you know, our cyber-sized substitutes are over budget quite a bit, so we just kind of, it all kind of washes.
And we just, we've added to that, that's been a problem for a few years.
Yeah, that's been a couple of years, we have added this year to it, so that would be good. Medical, well, we have a lot of new people that jumped on our medical discipline, so we may not see that this year.
Yeah, my, my only concern going forward is, you know, we did a great job this year at all staff and money-wise, but we have a lot of overages here. If we weren't getting money back, we'd be, we'd be in trouble. I looked at the first one or, or second one, 112, two unbudgeted hires in the prior year. The last meeting, we did the same thing for this year, we hired somebody that's not in our budget, and I asked that question and the answer I got was, well, we'll have the money, but, you know, we're supposed to show a budget where the money is. And I guess if we're going to be adding someone, I'm going to be asking the question, well, where are we taking that money from? Because if at the end of the year, we end up as a deficit, the Board of Ed members, we're responsible and it's illegal for us to spend more money than, than given to us. So, you know, we do a good job, but I think some of these things, you know, I think should be brought to the board during the year so that we know where these, these issues are. You've done a great job, Mary, of bringing stuff to us, but there's just probably too many items that are just over-budget.
There is a lot this year.
That we probably should be more aware of, that's all.
We started moving some of our salaries from grants, which we talked about. We had a lot of repairs and maintenance. And again, we knew we had a little bit excess, so we added repairs and maintenance at the end of the year to get it into the budget so that we could fix it as opposed to going to capital. So part of this, you know, I can, next meeting, I can tell you what we added at the end to So part of this, you know, I can, next meeting I can tell you what we added at the end to fix up, we had a lot of repairs that happened at the end of the year, and we're fortunate enough to have the excess costs this year, next year will be completely different. But this year we're fortunate enough to be able to add some of those repairs, a lot of HVAC issues this year with our aging infrastructure, so, yes, thank you.
We spend a lot of money on HVAC, and we need to, at least we've got the systems up and down where they should be.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Now, we probably should have had under-recommended actions, approve the financials.
Oh, you can't approve because they're preliminary.
Oh, because they're preliminary?
Yeah, so we don't want.
So you're not giving them to the Board of Finance?
I'm not, well, we can talk, we can discuss preliminary, or if you want to approve, we need to discuss preliminary at the end of the year, it's up to them.
Well, they're looking for our five-year plan. They're not asking for the financials.
They had financials last year, and we just said we're still working on them, but if you're okay for me to give preliminary results to them, if they ask.
Do what you did last year, we're not going to ask you to do anything more, that's good, okay. I just didn't know whether they were expecting, expecting that. Okay, thank you. So, then we'll go down to, any other questions from the board on that? Okay, board recommended actions, get a motion to approve policy 50, well, we already said we're going to table that, we're going to move that to our policy committee, I don't know, we need a vote on tabling it? Make a motion to table it?
Sure, make a motion.
Amanda, make a motion. John, seconding?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion tabling the, to the policy committee, the cell phones again?
Can we get it on for Thursday, or is it too late? 48 hours?
It's not too late, 24 hours.
24, okay, 24 hours. So we'll get out.
Could we, could we ask to have the copies of the handbooks?
Those are there.
At this point, but if you could make available to us the copies from the handbooks. They're all on the website, every single one of them is on there now?
Yes.
Well, that's brilliant, so you don't.
Anyone else on tabling it? Okay, all those in favor of tabling that policy?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carried unanimously, okay. Item 4B, we need to have a motion to approve the capital plan if we want to approve it, so we can present it to the Board of Finance. They're expecting to see that at their next meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve capital plan as set forth this evening.
Second for that? Ricky, the second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item 4C, approve graduation date 2026, I guess before you can make a motion to approve the date, I guess I'll ask Suzanne to talk about it. Suzanne?
So what we have, we've looked at the calendar, and we are looking at June 11th, which is 2026, which is a Thursday, which still allows the students to have the 181 days, so Friday is 182 days, and as you know, very smartly, we've built in those, those days, so we do have that space to work with. So we were looking at the calendar, and we think that June 11th will work for many reasons, but also that it's not a Friday, does make certain things easier for groups and community members, so that is the suggestion.
That was what the PTO suggested, I know they were.
Project Rad.
Oh, Project Rad was.
I believe that the suggestion was, yes, okay, thank you very much.
I know it was, don't be Friday.
Don't be Friday, that's what I was going to say, that was expensive for Project Rad, where they go. Exactly, that's what we were hearing. So, but because we're well within that, you know, flexibility, that was, that is wonderful that, that you have here, that we have here, Thursday is what we're proposing.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor of the motion, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carried, okay. And item D was the new one we added, approve Connecticut State Department of Education Child Nutrition Program, can I get a motion for it first?
I move to approve the superintendent and business manager as authorized signers for claim reimbursement for the CSD Child Nutrition Program as presented.
Who tells what that means? Is there a second for that? Is there a second?
We need.
I'll second it.
Okay, Lisa, a second. Okay. Comments?
So this is our milk, this is our milk program.
This is the milk program.
Right, so we're not, we're brown bagged, it's just not good, it's our milk program where we get reimbursed for some of our milk, and we need the superintendent and myself, because the superintendent changed this year, I had to redo the forms, and that's why it's up for, for approval, it has to be approved at a board meeting and signed off by the secretary of board, to add Suzanne to, to as a signer.
No, it's a milk program, it's something we have to offer?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
There's a cell phone policy, they.
We have a policy.
I can't sign it, it has to be the secretary, but they can't give us a cell phone.
It's just, I was just curious how popular the milk is.
It's pretty popular.
Good.
Little kids more so than.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My kids use it.
A lot of the high school uses cereal in the morning.
Yeah.
And, but it's pretty much popular K through middle school, actually, actually, all the way up, it's really the high school that built it.
Do we sell milk machines in the schools?
No, no. The break, the milk comes in every Tuesday, what we order for the week.
We got rid of those with the Chef Boyer D machines.
Oh, okay. Milk and chef.
Any further questions on the milk program?
I don't think so. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item five, agenda items for future meetings.
Approve policy 5034?
You can say cell phone policy, right? Any others?
We don't have to do the three tables.
Okay, comments from visitors, I'm glad we have three visitors now tonight, thank you for coming out, appreciate having an audience, any comments?
Ask a question?
Uh, it's not a Q and A, we're just not prepared for questions, it's, it's comments. I mean, sometimes I answer them, but I really, it's supposed to be just a comment.
It would be nice to know what the reason for all the HVAC is in the middle school, high school, I don't know, I've seen communication, and if that's related to why banned cannot be had in, in those rooms right now, I don't, I just, other than just getting an email from the principal saying, hey, we're not going to do that right now, we don't, we're going to, we're going to be postponed, can't have class in those rooms right now, just don't know what's behind it.
I'll let the superintendent address that, we'll answer your question.
Yeah, absolutely, and then we can, I can make sure that by tomorrow, I will get you a full, you know, report or step by step. So the statement that I read was shared with everyone in terms of the principals, and was also shared with the staff, and what's happening now is that the HVAC is actually, the HVAC there is good, it has really, it had very little, and we're waiting on those written results, so there's very little that I want to say right now to make everybody feel good, like they're getting back in, but, but we, we are, we're moving, as we just spoke about, very, much quicker than I thought. So we do have the air testing that happened, we're going to have those results within the next couple of days, if not tomorrow, and then the cleaning. And if I'm correct in, in hearing what you're saying to me, just sort of more, you would, you would like a more like understanding of the day by day of what we've been doing?
I'm not sure if this is a thing that happens every year this, around this time, and it just hasn't gotten done, or if something happened to cause this check.
Okay, I hear you, so actually.
Or if it's a safety issue, if it's just a bad for the instruments, or whatever, you know.
Okay, that's, thank you so much, actually, I'm going to be able to prepare, we'll make sure that we get those answers for you by, by tomorrow. I mean, I'd love to wait until just we got the, the permanent air testing to really talk about those things, because I, I really want to make sure that the community, everybody is aware of it. So thank you for bringing it to my attention, that the steps that we took actually didn't make it to, to, to the community at large, so we'll make sure that we are communicating that to you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Eddie.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I did have one comment, Suzanne, you were talking about, and Bob, also about getting the teachers' input on the cell phones, and last year at the high school, I was part of the parent advisory committee, and they had done a survey for the students and the teachers and the parents. And then, so they get all the results, and then they realize, okay, we probably needed to tweak some of those questions, they weren't appropriate from second graders up to, you know, 10th graders, and they all, didn't all apply. So I think Mr. DeMello had been working on, and probably others, not just him, kind of updating some of the questions that might be more applicable, so I would be interested to see if that was something that they would be trying again. So I, I don't know, but that discussion and surveys did happen last year, and Mr. DeMello did have the results that he had shared with us.
Hey, thank you, thank you both. Tom, comment.
Dave.[1701.87]